Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Special Committee of the Whole Tuesday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at ten a.m. And to acknowledge we are on the traditional territory of the Chehalis. I have one housekeeping change I just want to bring to attention here. And that's to the Order of Business, so the removal of the introduction of late items. So as per council procedural bylaw for eight, section eighteen Committee of the Whole, that council resolves in any event only to the extent that the business exists at that particular meeting under each of the following subject headings. The usual order of Committee of the Whole shall be blah. So I am asking for a motion to, again, for a housekeeping order to change the removal of Order of Business. Do I have a second or?
I don't know what you mean.
It's it's just it's a it's because the Order of Business that's on the agenda package that's in front of you has has the sorry, the Order of Business of new business removed from it. So it's just it's just a housekeeping change. It just requires if it's if it's if it's different from what's in the council procedural bylaw, it just needs a council resolution to continue on with the meeting as as in front of you. So it's just a formality.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Jackson. Discussion, call the question all in favor. Passes unanimously. Next order of business, please. Okay. He's gone.
So the next order of business is under number three items for discussion. And today there will be a presentation of the draft OCP bylaw one one eight four twenty twenty-two from Ken Cossey, planning consultant. And then under there, we have the draft village of Harrison Hot Springs Official Community Plan by law one one eight four twenty twenty-two.
I probably threw you off a little bit here. Item number two, the approval of the agenda.
Oh.
That's okay.
Sorry.
So approval of agenda move by.
As amended.
Counselor Jackson. Or seconded, sorry, by Counselor Jackson. Discussion.
I'm sorry, your worship, who moved that?
Sorry.
Who moved that?
Counselor Jackson. Well, I moved it, sir.
You moved it, okay.
Yes, seconded by Counselor Jackson. Discussion, call the question all in favor of approval of agenda. Passes unanimously. Next item of business, please, ordered. Which is.
Would you like me to re-did it again?
No, I don't think we need to repeat it again. But just before we we pass it over here to our planner, I just want to give a, just for members of the the public that are on Zoom and and here today. I think it's really important that people understand where we are and how we got here and what's all in the administrative side of it, how council works to this. I just received some paperwork here from our planner, and I know he's got a lot of stuff he wants to talk about on that process, so I'm going to try and stay away from that, and I'll let him talk about that. But I just want to start off with just saying that the the official community plan, which is the purpose of this meeting today to discuss this, is a very, very important. I think one of the most important decisions that this mayor and council will make. It's going to set the direction of how this village is going to look, both physically and spiritually. So that being said, I'm going to actually, I'm going to skip the first part, which is where the planner has done most of his work. And I'm going to skip to when, in fact, the where council really gets involved in it. And that is actually in the reading and adoptions of the official community plan. So the official community plan was was read first time this twenty-fourth day of August twenty twenty-two. So what does that mean? What that means and bear with me here as I look through my own notes here. What it means is for first reading, first reading is basically just a tabling of the official draft community plan or introduction. So that was the first reading, which was done again, the August the twenty-fourth. Also, that same day, there was it was amended and read a second time. When it was amended, the so second reading, what second reading means is that the discussion and principle of the content of the bylaw, which is the OCP. In that meeting, it was deferred to a number of organizations for comment. And it was sent to our advisory planning committee for for review and comment. And there was also sent, there was a public hearing that was held September the twentieth of twenty twenty-two. So moving on, all of that input from from the outside agencies and from the advisory planning committee and from the public hearing, that information was digested by administration and our planner and brought back to council on the twenty-third of September. And that was for reconsideration of the amended amended recommendations and for third reading. So there were a number of recommendations that were that were brought forth. All recommendations were were approved by council and third reading was given. Following that decision, the council had decided as it was during the election time to postpone it to the new council, which was to be in the first month of January of this year. During that meeting in January of this year, council had decided, in fact, it was Counselor Jackson, who had asked that we postpone a final reading and adoption of this of the OCP bylaw and that it be deferred back to to be deferred until February, I believe it was the sixteenth. That time has come and gone, and here we are today. But part of the request of Counselor Jackson's was to defer it was as Counselor Buckley and Counselor Jackson both wanted an opportunity to go through and review the OCP. I believe they wanted to go through it page by page, so we set this Committee of the Whole meeting for today and tomorrow to give council an opportunity to ask their questions in detail. Again, I think this, the official community plan is is a very, very important document. And I think it's really important for the public to understand again, how this process works. So I hope that helps a bit. So saying all of that, there are three of us, there's two counselors and myself, who were not part of that process. So basically, it went all the way up to third reading and final, almost final adoption. And then it was moved over to this new council. So there's three of us that that weren't part of that process. So I I think that this is going to be a healthy discussion today. I look forward to it. I do have a concern and and it's an administrative concern, and it's I think it's a serious administrative concern. But is is the official community plans, I've got numerous copies of of the plans and they're not dated or they're not revision numbers, so I'm not sure which is the first, second, or or which one, so it makes it a little difficult for to find, but anyway, I have the final one in front of me now. And what concerns me is the final one that I have in front of me here has alter has alterations that that have been done since the date that the third reading was done on September the twenty-third. So this alone, I think, is council has to follow the municipal act or sorry, the Local Government Act and the charter, and it has its own council procedural bylaws. The strict regulations, most of it is in the local municipal act. And the local municipal act is gets very, very specific when it comes to either zoning or an official community plan bylaw and very, very specific on it. So no amendments should be done to a to something that has already gone through first to third readings without the resolution of council. So this item, and I mean, I picked one item and I picked it up right away, and you know, it just concerns me. I don't know what else has been changed on it. But to make amendments to to a bylaw as it goes through this process is 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 a serious administration issue. For that reason alone, and I've made it public before, I would like to see the OCP be defeated. That being said, I'm going to move on to our planner and actually, just before I pass it over to the planner, because Counselor Buckley and Counselor Jackson actually requested this this meeting. How would you guys like to proceed with this? Did you want Ken Cossey just, or sorry, our our planner, I'm trying to try and use your titles so that people know who it is, that's because they can't see you guys in the background. Is do you, would you like the planner to do his presentation and then start asking questions? Did you want to just start from page one of the OCP and go through page by one? What's your general thoughts, counselors?
Well, personally, I don't want to go through page by page. I find that much of the OCP is very well done. However, I do have some recommendations, substantial changes.
Yes.
As I say, I wasn't here before.
Yes.
And then obviously, it's going to go back to public hearing at some time in the future. We have one shot at this, let's get it done.
Thank you, Counselor Buckley.
Thank you, Mayor. I would sort of like to go through it with the page by page. You don't have to read every item on that page, but maybe explain what's there. That will also give the residents a chance to see what is actually in here. And it would also, in case I've missed something or whatever, bring it to light. So rather than just jump from one to twenty pages, if we could do it page by page. And like I say, you don't need to read out every line, but maybe the gist or something, depending what's on the page, but that would be my preference.
Thank you, counselor. So to our planner, does that work out? Or did you want to do this little presentation here first, or?
If I could, your worship, I'd like to do the presentation because it provides some background information.
Yeah, go, let's let's do that first, and then we'll start looking at page by page and see how we do, how that works out.
Thank you, your worship. Today, we're going to have a presentation on the official community plan update. And first off, we're going to talk about what is an official community plan. We're going to review how the draft new OCP was created, and this will be looking at the OCP technical topics that we went through, the community consultation strategy, and the major changes to the current official community plan. Can everybody hear me okay? What is an official community plan? An official community plan expresses the community's vision and is a blueprint for future development. The OCP is a comprehensive policy document, and I emphasize policy document, designed to guide the physical, environmental, economic, social, and cultural development of the of the village. And the reason I'm saying that it's a policy document, the courts don't view this as a land use regulatory bylaw, like a zoning bylaw. They see this as a policy document. There's only one case that I'm aware of where the courts said, yes, the approval officer is correct. It violates the official community plan. That's highly unusual. Usually, the courts don't look at an official community plan as a land use regulatory tool. So what it does, it addresses higher level issues. It is a blueprint for future development. There's basically a hierarchy of plans that exist in the land use planning world in British Columbia. That is, the regional growth strategy is the highest level plan that is produced by the the regional district of the area. If they're do or opted into the regional growth strategy, the second highest level is the community's official community plan. Then you get into specifics with your land use zoning bylaw. And there's a lot of confusion as to what an official community plan does and what a zoning bylaw does. And it didn't help for the longest time in British Columbia. The OCP, I'm sorry, the zoning bylaw came first, and then the official community plan came afterwards. And the advice that came out from the ministry at that time was, well, just call, just take what you got in your zoning bylaw and just call it an official community plan. So that muddied the waters completely. There's a lot of things that are in official community plans that should not be there. They should be into the zoning bylaw, such as density issues, specific types of land use issues, that sort of stuff. So that's just a little bit of background as to what's happened in British Columbia. But the biggest thing about an official community plan, it is a blueprint, and that's a high level plan for future development. The current official community plan was adopted in two thousand and seven, and today is sixteen years old. The community council, first part of the community consultation, the key takeaway was overall support for the current vision statement and the current OCP goals was great. So that meant we shifted away from creating a new official community plan to a revised and updated official community plan. And what we meant by revised and updated is to make sure that all the current tools and all of the other changes to the Local Government Act, which guides the development of the community plan, have been incorporated into the official community plan. Some of these new tools we'll talk about a little bit later on include community amenity contributions, development approval information, or impact analysis. But basically, the to start with, as we said, the village's current vision statement was strongly supported by the community. And that also included the ten goal or the ten goals associated with it. And you can see that they're written right up here, and they're still relevant from two thousand and seven, and they're still relevant today. And they've been brought forward because of that community support for those goals. So you can see there's protect and maintain air and water quality and biodiversity, protect views of the lake and the surrounding mountains, develop tourist recreational features and activities for the benefit of residents and visitors, establish the distinct pedestrian-oriented village center with a range of commercial services. Those are the goals, the visions, which is back here, talks about a strong commitment to maintaining the scenic qualities, the environment, the quality of life, environment, and cultural life combined with a high standard of development. So to achieve those, that vision, these ten goals came into play. While we were going through the revision and update, you can see goal number ten was added into the bylaw, and it said reduce greenhouse gas emissions, which is a nice goal, but there was no tools in bylaw eight sixty-four, the current bylaw, to do that sort of task. So the authority for the official community plan is found in sections four seventy-one to four seventy-eight. And it outlines the purpose of of the plan. The village may adopt one or more official community plans, and OCP must be adopted as a schedule, which we have done, to a bylaw, and it must designate the area that it covers. Now, if you see in front of you, there is two maps. There's the zoning bylaw map number one 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 five two thousand and seventeen, marked Schedule A. And then there's also the land use designation map. Number one, land use designations. An official community plan designates where your residential areas are going to be, where your commercial areas are going to be, where a industrial area may want to be, your parks and trails and all those other things. What the official community plan does not do, it does not get down to the specific site. This is where the zoning bylaw comes into play. And one of the concerns that's been raised by the people after the fact was the, in the current official community plan, it says the low-density residential designation areas, which are all the yellow. On the land use designation map, map number one, will allow single-family dwellings and duplexes. And that's true, that's allowed in the low-density designated residential areas. What, how do we implement that requirement? The zoning bylaw has four residential zones. The first one is the R one, which allows for single-family dwellings only. And the second one is R two, where you have the duplexes. So if you compare the land use designation map with the zoning bylaw map, you'll see that there's an R one and an R two over that low-density residential area. So you can in one area, you can have the single-family dwellings, and in another area, you can have the duplexes. In addition to this, the authority also outlines what the content and process requirements are for an official community plan. It talks about the additional policy statements that may be included. It talks about the consultation and engagement that is to be utilized while the OCP is being addressed. That consultation strategy has to be taken and approved by council before staff can implement it. And we'll talk about that a little bit later on. There's discussions with the local school board, which took place, and how the 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 OCP bylaw is adopted. One of the big things is under section four seventy-eight point one of the Local Government Act. It says that the official community plan, even though you've adopted it, does not commit the council to proceed on any project outlined in your official community plan. So it's best if you're going to do other things, other plans, that you do them as a separate standalone project. Because if you put it into the official community plan and you deviate from that plan, technically, you have to amend your official community plan again. And that's not the purpose of the official community plan at this this time, because it's just high-level exercise. And we'll talk about some of the issues associated with that a little bit later on through the presentation. Oh, not work, there we go. So some of the technical topics that we reviewed, we created a background report, and some of the issues that we looked at included the Parks and Recreation Services, the transportation issues, the municipal services, the population and the and the potential growth, the housing issues, environmental issues, and the land use issues. And altogether, that was all looked at and becomes part of the current official community plan. So the consultation consultation strategy, there's many, many ways to define how you're going to consult with the public. You can inform the public, or you can involve the public, or you can engage the public essentially. You've got the three models. Informing is basically the council saying, this is what we're going to do, thank you very much. It it's a one-way street, it's not very effective. And then the other way is is the members of the community or other government bodies and stakeholders, they'll just tell the 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 village what goes into the official community plan, which is good to a point, but it's not an engaging process where it's got to have give good back and forth as we're going through this entire process. And this is the engaging model that we utilize, and we prepared a sample for the council to look at, and they adopted it, and we then we moved forward on the consultation strategy. We use many, many tools inside of that consultation strategy. The consultation strategy results, well, the activities that were authorized by council included putting it up on the website. We were allowed to host two and person pop-up events, April fifth and sixth, and June twenty-two and twenty-three. We had two online surveys, February one to February twenty-eighth and April fourth to the twenty-ninth. We had a World Cafe, a two-day session. We had people coming in and talking on specific issues that we went through with the technical inputs into the official community plan. And then we had the public hearing. Collectively, we had three hundred and sixteen individual responses and/or meeting attendees through the entire process. When we got the 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 online surveys up, people that clicked on and became aware of the of the fact that the the OCP project was on was four hundred and eighty-three individuals informed. That means that they downloaded some aspect of the background report. There was three hundred and thirty-four and actively engaged in the surveys, two hundred and twenty-four individuals. One of the other things too, on the online surveys, we had an earlier one done with Monkey. It was Survey Monkey, and we only had fifty-six individuals that responded to that one. So we, that was a very low number. So we did it again under the February one to February twenty-eighth, and the the numbers improved with the different platform we brought in for that specific issue. So based on everything, we looked at, how are we going to do this review process? While the approach that we looked at, we broke it into four phases. We looked at the phase one, phase two, phase three, and phase four. Phase one was the informing, educating, and collecting the required background technical information. Phase two was reviewing the new concepts. Phase three was design of the revised and updated plan, and we're currently in phase four with the adoption. So the updated review process, we looked at what is called a gap analysis. We looked at the background report that was prepared. We looked at the community input. We reformatted the current official community plan because it saved a lot of we didn't have to rewrite the vision and the goals because there was still good, strong public support for that. So we just had to reformat the current OCP. We added new planning tools, and we made it user-friendly through various methods. So what do we mean by a gap analysis? So basically, what we were looking at, does the current official community plan meet the requirements of section four seven three of the Local Government Act? So you can see this is the the matrices or the the table that we used, and it's got the four topics at the top. Local Government Act requirement, does the current official community plan address this requirement? What was done? And if required, what type of follow-up is needed for the revised and updated official community plan? Then as well, we looked at the various development permit tools, which outlined in the Local Government Act under section four eight eight. And we looked at the various types of development permits that may be created. This includes protection of the natural environment. Does the current official community plan use this type of development permit? And what I mean by current official community plan is the current bylaw eight sixty-four, not the draft one that we have at this point in time. But yes, it does have requirements in there, but the the requirements needed to be updated. Protection of development from hazardous conditions, yes, and that also needed to be updated. Because right now, all we had was geotechnical issues, but there was also a requirement as we went through this process to come in with a wildfire interface development permit area. Protection of farming is not required or applicable. Commercial area revitalization, that's if you've got a downtown business improvement association. The village does not have that, so that type of of development permit is not required. Forming character for intense residential development, we have that. That's for your multifamily developments, your townhomes, that sort of stuff. Forming character of commercial, industrial, and multifamily residential development. Yes, we have commercial and multifamily residential development permit requirements because there is no industrial development, there's no need to have the industrial development permit. Forming character of the resort region, that's more applicable to places like the Whistlers. A promotion of energy conservation, no. A promotion of water conservation, no. Promotion of greenhouse gas reduction. A policy was created and targets set, but as I mentioned earlier, there was no actual development permit as to show how you how the village was going to look at the promotion of greenhouse gas reduction. So also part of the the gap analysis, we came to the understanding that there was no community amenity contribution section. This is a policy that was created in two thousand and eighteen, and it's policy number one point two six for the village in in the village. And even though that the province, there's no legislation that allows for a community amenity contribution to exist. In two thousand and fourteen, the province came up with a guideline as to how a community amenity contribution should be incorporated into a municipal policy or into the the official community plan. And so it's over the long term. So what you can do with a community amenity contribution is you can go up to the to a developer and say, we have this policy in place. Would you like to donate dollars and cents to the to the fire department? Not operating capital, but capital. So if they got to buy their turnout gear, or if you're looking at buying a new truck, this is what the community amenity contributions does. And part of the guidelines that came out, even though there's no legislation for it, the problems came out with guidelines and said you should put it into your official community plan so that you continue on with the transparency process. So this is what we've done, is we put it in there. So instead of going to a developer and saying, would you like to So instead of going to a developer and saying, would you like to contribute? We can now go to the developer and say, it's in here. What are you willing to do? And there are certain categories that are being looked at through that. Then the and we have to be very, very careful because this uh resort municipality of Whistler was smacked very hard for this because they ended up using it to buy zoning privileges. So when the developers came in, they would say, we want to do this. The town would say, well, what are you going to give us? And they came across with the illusion of that they were buying their rezoning rights, which you cannot do. So the Supreme Court of British Columbia clapped down really hard on them. And this is, this is why we were coming up with this transparency policy and putting it into the official community plan. Then there's use of the development approval information tool. D A I. I'm sorry that we have to go through this that process and the reason I grown like that is development approval information is a long term that just means impact analysis. How's this going to impact the transportation, the local transportation system? How's this going to impact your local infrastructure? How's this going to impact any of your public facilities, your schools, your R C M P services? Any community services, how's it going to impact your natural environment? But for whatever reason, the the provinces refers to it as development approval information. And it's under section four eighty five of the Local Government Act. What you have to do, it's a two prong approach. You have to designate your official in inside your official community plan where your development improvement area is going to be. And then in a separate standalone bylaw, you say when we're dealing with transportation issues, you've got to do X, Y and Z, Mr. And Mrs. Developer. And we want a report that's been done by somebody that's got ten years of professional experience, twenty years of professional experience, whatever. But part of that development approval information requirement is that they can come up and say, this is what the potential impacts maybe this is what we're prepared to do to mitigate or reduce or eliminate those impacts. And they have to do that or provide all that information and what the cost will be to do all that sort of stuff. And this is a report that comes in, it helps the community understand the impact of a large project. And it's done on the developer's nickel. If we don't have that in there, we basically we're going to the developer and saying, can you do this for us? And technically, we're supposed to pay for it. And so in addition to this, we've added to the approving officer's duties where we in the subject, and what I mean by the approving officer is each municipality is appointed an approving officer. That individual looks after all of the subdivisions that come through the office. And in there, there's a certain requirement that says this is when you need to take parkland. This is when you can't take parkland. And section five ten of the Local Government Act requires you to make sure that it's specifically in the duties of your approving officer. If not, then the developer can come in and say, we're going to give you this. We're going to give you five percent as opposed to the the village going out and saying, we want cash or we want a park here. However, having said that, even though they'll take the developer can come back and say, we're going to put the park here. It doesn't matter if the village is not comfortable with that location, the park doesn't happen there because the park under this, the first scenario where the developer is dictating has to be approved by the council. So under the community input analysis, the major takeaways, as I mentioned earlier, was the support for both the current goal and the vision statements. Because as I said earlier, if we focus the whole project from taking what is currently in inside a lot of the stuff that's inside the current bylaw eight sixty four and bringing it forward into the the current draft official community plan. There's about eighty percent of this old bylaw that are inside of this new bylaw. And some of the changes that we put in there are the required housing report situation, the new two new development permit areas, the community amenity contributions, development approval information so that uh, we could capture the requirements under the legislation. So what are the major revisions to the current official community plan? So now I'm talking about uh bylaw eight sixty four when I'm saying the current. So what we've added into bylaw one one eight four, which is the draft one. We added a housing policy section, which is a new requirement of the Local Government Act. You can see bylaw one one eight four, section three point two. A community amenity contribution section we've added in section three point four. A development approval information section, which we added in section three point five. Excuse me while I just take a drink. When we were doing the earlier gap analysis, we found that the sand and gravel section, as per the requirements of the Local Government Act, were not in the current draft. So there's a new section of that as well. An interface wildfire protection development permit area under section four point five. A greenhouse gas emissions development permit area is under section four point six. Parkland or cash and loop as part of the approval officer's duty is now under section twelve point three paragraph, sub paragraph B of the bylaw one one eight or the draft bylaw. So what did we do? We removed the tree protection section. Uh, better, this is better addressed for your urban forest master plan review and the tree protection byline or bylaw. We've taken out the design guidelines. And the recommendation is that they have to be set up as a village should be set up as a village policy instead. And we've tied that into the official community plan with the words must must be developed within that context of the of the all the design guidelines. The sign policies in the current O C P. As the village now has a sign bylaw, so we've taken out all of the sign requirements because we don't want to duplicate anything that's already in a bylaw. Because if we're not the same, speaking the same language, it becomes confusing for members of the public and the people that are using it. And if it ever gets in front of a court, the judge will say, which one are we looking at? Um, various sections of the current O C P that are actually regulatory requirements outlined in the villagers zoning bylaw, such as the density issues and parking requirements, as I was alluding to earlier. Nice ideas, but they they're better, they work better for you in your zoning bylaw. And we took out reference to the creation of a tourism development strategy. That's been sitting in in the current official community plan since two thousand and seven. I don't know if there was ever a strategy that was ever ever developed. So we've just taken that out. Is that something that the council may want to look at as part of their strategic planning exercise? So the biggest change was the reformatting and the language changes. Most changes to the O C P have been through reformatting of the document. As you go through the current bylaw eight sixty four, you'll see in one section will be a reference to residential issues. And then you flip back a number of pages, you'll see something that says completely different. So that again gets confusing. If you like what the development project is, you focus on this one. If you don't like it, you focus on this one. This is the other discrepancy. It's got to be very clear and precise. So what we've done is all of the residential development policies are all under one section. All of the commercial policies are under one section. That's and this is how we uh reformatted it. And we've taken out a lot of the redundancies because a lot of the stuff was said over here. Some of it was also said in in the earlier versions of it. Uh, we made the O C P more user friendly or reduced the world size of the document from the current hundred and twenty five pages down to the forty eight. And that was because we took the design guidelines out of the O C P. Because if you ever wanted to change and use a different color paint, you have to go through an O C P amendment because it's the that attached as a a design guideline as a bylaw. Whereas if you're going into a public hearing and somebody comes up and says, well, we want it painted purple or whatever. I'm just using two extremes. You'd have to do an an O C P amendment. So it's best if you leave it as an O C P policy so that any new issues that are coming along from a design guideline, you can easily incorporate it into your 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 policy document. And the policy document, as I said earlier, is tied in because it uses the language must, which we'll get into it a little bit further on. Must means you have to specifically do something. A lot of people say shall, that used to be the way it goes, but there's been a Supreme Court case a number of years back. It's like ten fifteen years back, it says shall basically means you may want to do something, whereas must means definitively you have to do it. We made the O C P more user friendly in that we created section headings and moved all of the policies associated with that section into the section. That way the policies associated with the issue are found in one section as opposed to being scattered throughout the O C P. This update project also allowed the review team to remove any contradictory policy statements. We updated the maps associated with the bylaw. If you look on the land use designation map. Sorry, if you look on on your map in your your bylaw. It's map number two, development permit area in the small yellow pages. It'll be in the yellow pages of part of the development permit area did not go all the way up along the the lakeshore areas and did not go all the way up in and around Harrison River nor followed the Miami Creek tributaries. So those have now been resolved and added into. And shall and should were changed to must for better clarity and transparency with the new develop for new development applications. We've taken out of the area structure plans. If you want to do an area structure plan, that's nice. There's not no problem with that because you have that authority under the official community plan, but you set it up as a separate document, a separate bylaw. And then that way you say, notwithstanding what it says in section, whatever of the the O C P bylaw, you've you can address the issue as a separate standalone because we've had some applications come in in various neighborhood area structures where they're saying, well, we don't need to do this. We only have to do this because they're only looking at one section. They're not looking at the complete section of of the requirement for the changes. So it comes back to, I want this, so I want the bylaw to only address this issue. But there's all these other issues that haven't been addressed yet. So from a recreational, cultural education standpoint and the the health issues or safety standpoint and health issues, the education, health and public safety issues are outlined in section ten, page thirty eight. The objectives for that are outlined under section ten point two and the related policies are outlined under section ten point three. For the recreational and cultural issues, there's section eleven or page thirty nine of the bylaw in front of you. And the objectives are outlined in section eleven point two and the policies are outlined in section eleven point three. And thank you very much for listening to me and trying to explain what an official community plan and a zoning bylaw do two different tasks. But in the meantime, if there's any questions, your worship from the council.
No, I think we're just going to start with going through the startup page beginning and just go through the page and if anybody has any questions on the page and we'll just continue on through that. So I'm going to start with um just just actually page one. And just for administrative reasons, um it makes it so much easier if when alterations that are done, that they're done in a different color font so that we can easily see and find out what's been changed. Um, and it would also be extremely helpful to know which revision number it is or the the date of of the actual um draft bylaw. Any other comments, just on your questions, discussion on page one? Seeing none, page two. Any questions, discussion on page two? Seeing none, move on to page three. Discussion questions. I have a question on page three. Under the top section of page three, where it's identified as E. It says unless otherwise defined here, the definitions contained within this bylaw have the same definition as outlined in the Harrison Hot Springs zoning bylaw, blah, blah, blah. Um, I understand the the idea behind this, but it states here though, unless otherwise defined here. Um, do we have any definitions defined here in this O C P or are they all in the zoning bylaw?
They're all in the zoning bylaw already, your worship. And the reason that we've done it this way is so that we ensure that we're using the same language all the way through. And because we've got it this way and whenever the zoning bylaw is amended or whatever the issue is, it can automatically update the requirements in the official community plan.
Thank you. Over to page. Page four is blank, page five. I think page five and six and seven are just the table of contents. Any concerns there, page eight? The comments, concerns on page eight. Seeing none, over to page nine. Comments, questions? I I have a question here on page nine. Um, under section two point two, goal number two. Uh, it talks about that the gives the design guideline, guide. The design guidelines policy will provide a framework for downtown. Do we have this policy or where is this policy?
Yes, it's currently inside of bylaw eight sixty four. And it's called, it's referred to as design guidelines. And what we're looking at doing is taking that design guidelines out of the bylaw and that will become a policy. But we can't adopt it until the new official community plan is in place as a policy.
So that's in place, ready to be for adoption.
Yes, it can be adopted quite easily and quite quickly.
Thank you. The only other question I had on the same page was under again, section two point two under goal four. And it just, it says here, uh, to protect the views of the lake and the surrounding mountains. The strategy to achieve this goal will focus on protecting, enhancing the views to the lake from key sites on Littlewood Avenue. I'm just a little confused with the word on Littlewood Avenue. Is is it Esplanade and Littlewood, Littlewood Avenue? Or are we just talking about sites on Littlewood Avenue? It's the very last paragraph.
In this section or this requirement, this has been brought forward from the bylaw eight sixty four and it's just Littlewood Avenue.
So why would we just be protecting the views on Littlewood Avenue? Can you help me understand that one? Is it because all of the ones that the most of the most of the buildings that are actually, I may think are on Esplanade are actually legally on Lilwet? Is that? Yes, my question is, is why is Esplanade missing on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
If I may, thank you. I believe originally the idea was and from the public input was to get the views of the lake from Lilwet. The lake was the 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 feature, so to speak.
So there's a lot of views which which for six months of the year anyhow are quite beautiful, looking the opposite way to our team. I just So would it make sense to include Esplanade and Lilwet on this on goal four?
If that's the wish of council, yes, your worship. But also in the development permit area maps on page fifty two, we've covered off with Littlewood Esplanade and all the way up to the Miami River almost with the uh lakeshore development permit area guidelines, which addresses all of those issues.
Thank you. So I would move that we add Esplanade with Lilwet on this goal number four. I don't need a second. There is there any further discussion on that? Ready to call the question, all in favor? Passes unanimously. Move on to the next page. Number ten. Discussion. Counselor Buckley.
Thank you. Um, when I read golds, goal seven.
When I read goals, goal seven, it says manage traffic and parking and promote transportation alternatives. The strategy to achieve this goal is to manage traffic flows, parking so as to minimize congestion, disturbance of residential areas. And I'll read that one again, disturbance of residential areas and to provide a bicycle and walking path network. Visitor parking is a key issue. The livability and attractiveness of the community will depend upon the ability to manage seasonal traffic volumes. And. By reading that, I guess. What I'm taking away from this is we have the overflow parking next to our village office. And what I would like to propose, because by doing that, first of all, I'll say by doing that, if we were to develop. That lot because it has been subdivided into lots. By developing that, we would then have no overflow parking and it would definitely infringe upon the parking for residential. There's no doubt in my mind whatsoever. So what I would like to propose is that we keep approximately two lots. Three lots, whatever it's going to take for the proposed new village office in the future at some time and turn the rest into a park. Because by doing that, it will be there in perpetuity for the residents of this village. And it would be used for various things such as the overflow parking, such as the fire hall get together. You know, possible dog park area with fences that would open for parking and all of the above and a lot more. But I think by leaving it and not putting it in here. It would be up to maybe not this council, but somewhere down the road where they decide, hey, let's just sell this because we want to put in some commercial or whatever we want to do. And I think that would be a real injustice to that area and space. We will never get it back once it's sold. So I I guess I would like to ask our counselors and yourself what their feel is on that because to me that's pretty important. And I think we have a real opportunity here to keep this for future use as a park. And also to have a few lots that would butt up against the current village office for future construction. Of an office. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor, counselor Jackson.
Thank you, worship. I agree with what counselor Buckley says, however. The one thing that I O C P is supposed to be a window into the future. The O C P is supposed to be a window into the future. What I would propose to go in. Is that. We look at making Espinon Avenue a total walking area for everybody in the village. And before the price of land goes out that we buy or purchase some land on Littlelet. Or some other place for a parking facility. It would be wonderful if we could have that or not with no cars on it at all. But that takes some planning, but that's the way I think we should go in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fazio.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. No disagreements. With the two colleagues here, but we have. Completed last year, I believe, a parking study. I think that should be looked at as well. It is a document that was. We just clarify that with our. Operations manager, did we not do a parking study? And that that identifies the areas that counselor Buckley is referring to. I would like to see the, there's not even lots, I think, available that. Or development, I would like to see five of them kept and four turned into the suggestion for a park area and parking. At least that leaves some. And that's the only piece of land that we have at the moment unless we move forward with at some point the counselor Jackson's suggestion. That's the only piece of land that we have. That we do have in the rest of the plan here to look at available housing or rental or rental. Seniors downgrading for them as well. So I would, I agree with you, but I think we should. Maybe use four lots for the park or parking or half and half and reserve five lots for whatever. May come whether it's the office or whether it's the new center or. A complex for the seniors. Rental units. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could ask a question, Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. Would you be happy with four lots? The reason I say that is because the parking is will already be there in the park. When you say parking for these facilities, so it would already be there. So that's why I'm saying I would prefer and I am willing to negotiate here if that's what we're doing, but. Yes, okay.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Bidel. Do you have any want to jump in on that one? Yeah, I want to just jump in here on this one here. I think, I think. I mean, I've heard, I've heard great ideas from all three of us or three of you, sorry. I also have some some other ideas too. I don't think that this really is the place to get into all of our ideas. I think it's, I think it's, it, this actually just shows that we really need to actually. I think get get into that specific issue and and it should be open to the public. I'd like to see open houses. I would like to see discussion on it. I think there's great ideas. Again, that have been placed by all members here, but I don't think that right now under this O C P. I don't think that that's. Maybe our planner can help me out on that there. That that that's really because this is really talking about managing traffic and parking and transportation. I think what you what we've involved to is buildings, we've evolved to a lot, a lot of things. If we just keep it at the parking issues, even counselor Jackson's idea of turning Esplanade. Into a walking area, I think that's a major change. I I think that's worth investigating. But again, I think the public needs to be involved in that. So how do we make that work in this O C P?
I would recommend that you don't at this particular time, your worship. I would recommend that you. Keep tabs on this and when you have your strategic planning exercise, talk about it as a potential projects down the road.
Thank you. So I have a question for you here too, under that same goal seven. So and to provide a bicycle and walking path network. Do we actually have a a strategy for that or is that something that still has to be created? The operations. So we have something for the cycling. And is it just, is it just for the the beachfront or is it for the village as a whole or? The village as a whole. So would that be then some, would that be a, just so that I understand again with the O C P here now? Would that be a policy which that would be referring to? That. With specific goals to number seven, with that.
It's all is talking about is just that this summer, a bicycle route plan should be prepared. And it outlined through your transportation plan would be the logical conclusion for that.
So you're happy with how that is worded right now with them?
Yes, in it's it's because it's higher level this this plan, the transportation plan gets into the specifics.
So did we have the motion, counselor Buckley or?
Can I ask when the next strategic planning? I guess what I was looking for with this one. Is not to do it willy nilly. I am more than willing to sit down and do this right, but I I feel very passionate about this one. And I would like to get it done, but not wait. And I know when Mister Cossey had said that it shouldn't be in the O C P. But I think before we pass this O C P, going ahead with this, what it says, and this is our goal is to manage traffic. And parting parking and that would be before we build any parking lots or do anything else, that would be down the road somewhat for sure. And I just don't want this to say if it doesn't happen in our term or something, somebody else come along and sell all those lots and that's the end of it. I would like to get it done sooner than later and I see our. C A O has something to say to that, so I will just let her speak and then I'll get back to you.
Thank you, counselor.
Mister Mayor, what I would suggest is that I've got some notes here. We'll have some minutes that will be taken and we'll take this away from the O C P part of things. And bring it back forward to council under a separate venue to have that a fulsome discussion on this issue.
Thank you. We have counselor Good. Anything, counselor Bidel?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I just want to you thank Mister Cossey for. His explanation that both our parking strategy and our active transportation. Be referred to. Strategic planning session. I think it's important we keep in mind as Mister Cossey has mentioned. That the O C P is. A guideline and the intent is that we wanted to get away from absolute specifics. That perhaps be addressed better in separate policies or bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you. So were you making a motion there, counselor Bidel? Or is that just discussion?
That was just discussion, Mister Mayor.
Thank you. We're good with, we're good with this one? I guess I had a. I had a question, but I think some of it may have been answered in your, in the planners opening. Discussion here and that's on goal eight. And it's. It's a strategy to achieve this goal, sorry, provide for a mix of housing types for all ages and incomes. The strategy to achieve the goal is to designate lands for a variety of housing types and to provide density. The bonus incentives for affordable and special groups housing. The density bonus incentives, is that something that we have in place? Or something that would have to be worked towards?
Your worship, that's currently in zoning by law one, 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 five.
One, 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 five. So that exists today.
It exists right now, yes.
Thank you. Next, next one I have, just going to continue on the same page here. Let me move this a little closer. Is that better? Thank you. Which is goal number ten, which is to reduce the community greenhouse gas emissions. So it's got on here. Second line, second line, it says the strategy. To achieve this goal to is to encourage a compact and complete village center, facilitate and redesign transportation infrastructure. Could the planner kind of help me out, understand what that means?
Already, this your worship, everybody knows about Kelowna. And how long it just follows the highway all the way up, it sneaks all the way up as opposed to concentrating and trying to bring in. As as much residential development into a compact. Closed closer community as opposed to having ten acre lots, twenty acre lots. And then you have single family dwellings that go all the way that wind away all the way up along the transportation route. You try to bring in as much as you can into your infill areas and look at higher density. As opposed to going for a sprawl concept.
Thank you. That's all the questions I had for page ten. Any other questions on page ten? Move over to page eleven, at page eleven, sorry.
Quickly, Mister Mayor, sorry. Move too quick on me. On page ten at the bottom, I'm just wondering in today's world if we shouldn't change the verbiage. To be all inclusive on that. I don't know if this. Is relevant to that where you're talking about males and females in the total participants. I know the province is trying to bring in different legislation. And that sort of thing, but I just wondered if that's something we should be doing as the village to include in our O C P and other documents. Thank you.
Did you want to make, did you have a motion for that, counselor Buckley, or just a comment? Just, just go.
Yes, it was for discussion and I will ask Mister Cossey his thoughts on that.
It's whatever the council wishes is that that doesn't change the impact of the O C P by any stretch. If you want to take out those statistics. I'm assuming you're talking about the male at fifty one point two percent and the females at forty seven point one percent of the labor force. And we can just talk about. The total participants and leave it at that if that's the wish of council, that's not a problem.
Okay, so I'm gonna, so let's put a motion. Sorry, sorry, counselor Bidel.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Just a question for Mister Cossey. Where did those? Labor statistics come from? Thank you.
Your worship, they came from Statistics Canada, their latest profile that they sent out.
I just noticed it's dated two thousand and sixteen, so I do agree with counselor Buckley that. Perhaps it's best just to eliminate. That whole sentence and with that, I'll I'll move that the labor participation rate sentence be. Removed from the O C P. Thank you.
So you want the whole line all the way to the, to where it ends table below?
Please.
So we're ready to have further discussion on it. Call the question, all in favor. Passes unanimously. And that's the motion to remove that whole line. Okay, so over to page, page eleven. Discussion on page eleven. I just had a, just a, just a. Question on it, I guess. I know it says employment by industry again of twenty sixteen. I mean, we're already six, seven years old, but. But I mean, I read this and I mean, I don't understand how any of this relates to to the village. It really is, I think misleading because this appears to be what the what the employment is of the of the residents, which which aren't. This would be their employment, most of them away from here. I would think that what would be important in our industry type would be actually showing. For instance, our accommodation and food services. I mean, I think it would be more important to see what the percentage of the workforce is of the village versus somewhere else. There's a number of things here, transportation and warehousing. I don't think we have any. And yet it's still got four point one percent of the of the workforce here. So I don't know what merit this, the employment by industry has and. I'd almost suggest we either remove that whole. That whole section. As it has really no relevancy to our village or we should be. Upgrading it to what relates to the village here. Any discussion with the counselors? I would, counselor Buckman?
Oh, okay. Through you to Ken, Mister Cossey, is this where the. It might understand this is where the people that live here work in the industry or is this just? They work in this industry within the village boundaries.
Thank you, worship. This is the individuals that reside in Harrison Hot Springs and their occupation. And this again is information is provided by Statistics Canada under the community profile for Harrison Hot Springs.
Thank you. And that's what I, when I was reading this, that's what I understood it to be, not what we had in the village. So, thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion just to remove that, that graph.
With Mister Cossey's comment, these are the people that are residing here that work, not that work in the village.
Why, why would we care if what's happening on the side of the village? I mean, the employment by industry would be important for the village, but I don't, how is it, how is it relevant to us that we have? We have somebody working in transportation and warehousing. I just think that's misleading to be in the official community plan. I would think it should relate to what we actually have in the village instead of outside the village.
I think we could probably add it to that. I know if you're looking at an area to reside in or move into or whatever. I don't think it would hurt to have it in there, but. I agree, it would be nice to see how many of our residents were employed in the village and what occupations they had. residents were employed in the village and then what occupations they had as well. So I don't think it would hurt to add that. That's just my opinion, because we could have another paragraph in there similar to the one that's up there with those numbers in here as well, employed in whatever we're, they're doing in the village currently. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fassi, did I see you later on?
No, I just think we should leave, leave it as it is. I mean, unless we want to identify the separate identities, but I think leave it alone, it doesn't do any harm.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I just think it's misleading because of the official community plan, I would think should pertain to the village here. And I think it just, again, if somebody was to look at this, you would think that we would have all these types of jobs, employment within our, within our district here. So it appears it mostly, you want to leave it alone. So then I would move that we actually add another section, which is the industry relating to the village. Is there any further discussion on that? Then I'll call the question all in favor. Motion passes with Counselor Jackson opposed, and that's to create another employment by the village to be added.
Your worship, if I may?
Absolutely. Yes, go ahead.
That may be a little bit difficult because some of the employers may not want to give that type of information, whereas this information is extrapolated from the Census Canada Act. Whereas if somebody from the office went in and said, how many employees do you have? They may save none of your business.
No, it is a good point. Okay, so I'm going to, with, you know, we sent, we send that that motion. And I would actually ask that this employment by industry be removed. Do I, are we ready for the question to remove this?
Are we going to rescind the original motion first then?
It, it has been rescinded.
It has been rescinded, okay.
If I may, your worship, what this information also tells me is, as a planner, is that there's a lot of people that are traveling in and up and down and through your roads? And when you look and compare that with your bus system, like how many people are being captured on your bus from a certain industry? Because there's 630 individuals that are employed as of 2016 in the village, and this is what they do. And they're not all working in the village, so they've got to get to their work somehow. And that could either be by bus or by driving up and down your road, your roads. And so that becomes a tool, so you can look at it and say, we've got 55, for example, 55 people under retail trade in 2016, and we've got a, a different bus system in place. Now we see that that's gone down to 45. Does that mean that the other 10 have jumped on the bus, or does that just mean that they've been let go? So there's a whole bunch of information on, behind it, as opposed to just looking at it as a generalized approach? That's just my professional opinion, your worship.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Jackson?
Thank you, worship. One of the things that this tells me is that there's a lot of people who are driving out of our village every morning. And it's going to, it has an impact on our greenhouse gases, so if I look at the big picture here, we'll have to contend with this in the future in order, when all electric vehicles come, it'll be different. But one of our goals is to reduce greenhouse gases, but we have to have the statistics here to know exactly what we're dealing with. I would recommend we leave this in here because it is very valuable information from what I can see. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, I don't want to spend too much time on this one here. I, I just would find that would be very helpful if we knew what was in the village and what was out of the village, then you would know they would be leaving. So then I would totally understand with what you're saying, Counselor. So I, it's already 2016, it's already almost seven years old. I, I don't think these numbers really mean a lot. So I would move that we would, that we, we remove this employment by industry out of our OCP. Ready to call the question all in favor? Motion fails. Next, next page, 12. Discussion on page 12? I have a, I have a few questions here on it, under section 2.4, under the regional context statement. It says to support the regional growth strategy of the Fraser Valley Regional District. Is this the new draft version that we would have just seen in the, in the last few weeks?
No, your worship, you can't tie in a, an official community plan to a draft. So this is the current official or their current regional growth strategy?
That's unfortunate. Okay, thank you. I thought it was interesting. In the next paragraph where it says increased transportation choice and efficiency. So the, the same regional growth strategy on transportation improvements priorit, prioritizes or priorities, identify Hot Springs Road as a medium to long-term priority for upgrading to accommodate the increased population growth in the village of Harrison Hot Springs. I think that that would make a, a big change to this village if we add additional lanes to it, I guess is what they're talking about it. Yeah, I would note that I haven't seen the, haven't read the existing strategy, but I've read the draft and I don't see anything in the draft. Regional transportation improvement priorities that identify anything on Hot Springs Road at all. Counselor Fassi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it should be maybe worded a little bit different, where it relates more to the overall traffic that comes through the village because it's, you know, we have a a number of residents that live in the district, Kent, plus all the people that go to the Hicks Lake and the east side of the, of the lake as well. So that, that makes sense if that was mentioned, not just the population of Harrison.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion on that? To me, this, when I read this in the OCP here, it, it, it implies that we would be okay or at looking at the option of upgrading Hot Springs Road. And again, if we're looking at doubling it to adding an extra lane or bicycle lanes, I think that there's lots of, lots of consequences to that. So by having this, this statement in here, are council comfortable with that statement? See any? Counselor Jackson?
A major problem with Hot Springs Roads is that there's no right of ways. A long time ago, if you ever want to think of expanding the road, you would have had the right of ways already, but they're not there. So at the very best, I think what we could do is to get a nice bicycle lane in and out of the village. That, to me, would be the most important.
Great idea. Counselor Buckley?
Thank you. I know when that bicycle lane that they call it that was put in on my last term in council here, to my way of thinking is not a bicycle lane. It is still fairly narrow. I don't use it because I think it's dangerous. I do haul our bicycles up to Gulf Road and we go from there. And I know at the time it was the right of way on the public property that also was carrying this. So the expense of that and going through, and I'm guessing that's why that decision was made to make it as narrow as possible, or it has been enhanced. But to my way of thinking, a bicycle lane is should be one that you're not in fear of getting clipped from the back or the front. And the option at that time as well was thrown to go in behind just where our Sasquatch entrance is and go behind the golf course and around over there. And the golf course and the other residents that lived along that way were not in favor of putting a lane through there for a bicycle lane because it wouldn't be imposing on their property and there would be liability from the golf course. So until that would change, I can't really see them putting a whole other lane on Hot Springs Road. I just don't think it'll happen just because of the way the houses are laid out and it would be just really, really cost prohibitive, in my opinion.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion on that, Counselor Fassi?
I think, I think, I think at some point we are on the list to revitalize Hot Springs Road, referring to surface wise, and we do have an application, and as the mayor knows, regarding the, the stormwater situation. So at that point, I think that will be a discussion with the, the village and the Ministry of Highways. How can we incorporate a reasonable bike lane on the other side? When, when the, and the idea, I believe from my conversation is a rehabilitation, Hot Springs Road, of course, Linnawet, which is getting worse as, as we speak, the surface there, all the way to Rock or Drive. So I think that's something that will be a discussion with the provincial highways at the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Does our planner have any comments on that at all?
No, your worship.
So I think you picked it up though in, in, under item B there, which is to develop a pedestrian bicycle path along Hot Springs Road, and it says policy 12.3. I I think it's important, I mean, in the OCP, the importance of this OCP is, is, is again, the, an overview, and as Counselor Jackson said, if, unless they have right of ways or have the land, I mean, now would be the time to at least start designating it in any future development. If that's our intention in the, in the, in the future is to increase it for an extra lane, or if it's to allow for a bicycle or a walking path. I see we're starting to implement sidewalks in some of the new development. I'm going to assume that that continues, that policy or will continue on and throughout the village. I just want to make sure that, that the overall concept of the Hot Springs Road, I think it's the most and when you first drive into the village here, it's what we all see and use and you know, there's, there's bits and pieces of all kinds of different ideas as you go along, and then it would be nice to have something in our official community plan that would kind of strategize what in fact we really want on that, that we don't want maybe an extra lane, and we do want a bicycle pathway, and we do want a, a walking pathway. How do we accommodate that in this, in this OCP statement?
Again, that becomes a more of a strategic plan concept, your worship. The, what this is doing is proving to the, the authorities, in this case, to read the Fraser Valley Regional District that the regional growth context statements are tied in with your official community plan, and these are the policies outlining that, that tie in.
Thank you. To operations?
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to identify too, that the cross-section of Hot Springs Road is identified in the transportation master plan. That is what's informing all the development that's happening along that corridor today.
Thank you. So we want to add this into our strategy, our strategic planning session? So there's no motion necessary, just move on? Next page, 13. Discussion on page 13. Counselor Fassi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just at the top of the page 13, which support enhance the agricultural sector. I'm not sure what that quite means. We don't have agriculture in, in Harrison Hot Springs. I appreciate that the east sector is, comes under the agricultural land reserve boundaries, but I'm, I, so, I'm not sure the wording, I'm, I'm going to bring this up further along the OCP, but I want any, any wording that relates to any development of any kind or infill on the east sector to be removed from this OCP. But I'm just wondering, if I may ask the planner through you, is that something that I know from the RGS that needs to be in there, Mr. Cossey?
Excuse me, yes, your worship, it does, because of the requirements of the regional growth strategy, we have to prove that the, their eight goals have been complied with. This does not obligate or encourage any development along the way, just as we said in, in section A, is we recognize the jurisdiction of the Agricultural Land Commission over the land reserve and section B, agricultural lands are noted on map number one, land use designation map, and we've left it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, I've got, I've got a bit of discussion on this one. Maybe I'll start the conversation here. The, the first paragraph, the same paragraph Counselor Fassi was talking about. And it says there are relevant OCP policies are an A and B. And in section A, it makes reference to residential growth through infill and higher densities in the developed area and maintain resource and public use designations on the ALR lands. Could, to our planner, can you help me understand what that, what that means?
Certainly, your worship. What we're telling is the Fraser Valley Regional District is that we're going to accommodate residential growth through the infill and higher densities in the current land that's designated for residential development and in the resource and public land use designations.
Thank you. I've got just, just a lot of questions really with relating to this whole sector of land. And what's called Crown Land, it's called the sector land, it's called Village Reserve, it's got resources. The colors change to different, different meanings of it here. Part of it is, is in the agricultural land reserve and then it looks like there's 40 acres in Village Reserve which aren't in the agricultural land reserve. Can you, I don't know if it's, can you help me, to the planner again, can you help me understand how all these different areas work in there?
Certainly, your worship. The, the main thing that works is it's Crown Land, so it's organized and run through the provincial Crown Land system. And then once, if and when the Crown Land designation is ever removed, as outlined in the zoning by law 1115, then when we've got it noted there that when no longer Crown Land, this area will be treated as village a VR, Village Reserve.
So, so just help me out on that. Is that referring to the area now, which is all the small little cross boxes, which includes the gray, the yellow and the white? Or is it just the white?
It's the top part of the gray and the bottom part of the green.
Sorry, I don't.
So on the designation, land use designation map, the OCP, land use designation?
I was just looking at the one on the zoning map.
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay, so looking at the land use designation map, it's green and gray, right? So that is all Crown Land?
All of the hatch, patching area, yes.
So even the area which it would be to the north, which goes all the way up to the backyards of Cottonwood? And goes to the, it would be the, the, on the west side of that area would be McCombs? That is, that is Crown Land, or is it privately owned?
It's Crown Line, your worship.
Go on, Counselor Fassi?
You've got a, a little bit of gray.
Yeah, I can see.
Which is private behind Cottonwood. That's, that's the 75 acres, I believe, are privately owned, is it not, Mr. Cossey?
18.4 acres, I have.
My understanding is that, that it's a village community park area?
There's a lot of controversy or?
It's going to be biting in, Mr. Mayor. That is private land. That section behind the, behind the, behind Cottonwood there, which is that's, that's the, that's identified as part of that 75 or 73, whatever it is, of private land. And then there's the 80 acre And then there's the eighty acre. Castle that the village has for trails, we've had it for many years, and then the reminder is provincial.
So I'm still uncomfortable with, with the. With the zoning, with the existing zoning map that we have. And I know there's a lot of questions on it and a lot of concerns of, I guess the real question is, what is it going to become? So the concern is, will that land then all of a sudden be developed and because it's in the. Just trying to see what color it's called, it's a gray. It's under the, our land use designation as resources, is that all going to be? Um, developed as residential? To a planner?
Only if council approves a rezoning for it, your worship, because when you look at it right now, it's zoned village residential in the zoning by law. So once, if the province ever releases it.
So mine says it's Village Reserve.
Because you have the ability under the. Um, if you, if you don't put a zone in, in on it, when the government. Releases the Crown Land, it basically becomes a free for all. So now that, that's what we put under there, you notice under the zoning by law, there's that box. Currently Crown Land, please note when no longer Crown Land, this area will be treated as Village Residential. Or Village Reserve, sorry, long-term Village Reserve, and then in the zoning by law. The Village Reserve. The minimum lot size for subdivision purposes would be six hundred. Square meters, subject to A L C requirements.
So that land, again, I'm gonna talk about that land to the north, which is um, south of Cottonwood and east of. McComb, um, that whole area, which looks like it's about seventy-five acres from what I've got here. Um, is, is potentially for future. Development of some sort. Um, is that land correct, currently in the agricultural land reserve?
My understanding is part of it is your worship, where that, that hatching mark goes up?
So which part, the hatch part is in the agricultural land or the, or the non-hatch?
The, the hatched part is in the agricultural land reserve. Are we talking about the land use designation map?
I was looking at the zoning one here, let me just switch over, they're both the same, yes. The land use designation.
You can also look at the zoning by law map and all of that hatching. Is also into the A R.
So how do we, or how can we ensure as, as council? Or in this O C P, that we protect that land so that land is not developed? Can we do such?
Yes, you can through your zoning by law, your worship.
Is that in place in our zoning by law now?
Yes, we have a village reserve policy. Land use requirement, and it's also subject to the Agricultural Land Commission requirements. So it'd be a two-pronged approach, you would need approval from. The Agricultural Land Commission and from the village.
So can you confirm that no application at this time is, or are you aware? Of any application? Um, is, is with the agricultural land reserve on the property?
Any agricultural land reserve application, because it would first come through this, this council table, your worship, and then go into their system.
Thank you.
So, sorry, yes, go, sorry, Counselor.
I'm still confused as to where the private land is.
Yes.
Because that's not showing here, Mr. Cossi, because I know in fact that land was sold, so um, I guess I'm asking why isn't that showing on here as well? Because to, I understand it runs right behind Cottonwood.
There's that little strip of yellow lender. At the top.
Yes.
On. That. Is the private, or I guess it's, sorry, gray on the land use designation map.
Gray on one and yellow on the other one?
Yep.
Yep. Okay.
So. That's, that would be outside of the Crown Land and that. Uh, was owned by whomever.
Right.
Haven't subdivided it.
No, well, it's in the A L R to my understanding, is that not correct?
Hold it, there's a little sliver. That's outside of the agricultural land area.
Okay.
That little sliver, just to confirm, is to the east of that, is that on the land designation map? Is that the part that's not hatched?
That's right, yes, right backing on the Cottonwood there. Just to the south of Cottonwood Avenue.
South of Cottonwood, but, but to the east of it. So when you're looking at either one of those maps, it would be the area that's not hashed. Is that correct to our planner?
I, I don't know, and also there's the one on the land use designation map that has the little square. If you look at the map number one, land use. There's the little rectangular lot there and then is that? The property then that's owned. It's in the District of Kent? I know there's about twenty acres in there, Mr. Cossi, is that the rectangle on map designation one? Uh, land use that has that rectangle, is that the privately owned section? That currently has a residence on it? I believe it's around twenty acres.
These two?
Uh, the one, yeah, the one right above it, uh, right above Cottonwood Avenue that runs right all the way to Echo. There's a rectangle in there, um, that shows a lot and I. I, I guess I just wanted to make sure that that's in fact what it was. I can show you.
Sure. Are we talking about the? That, yeah, that is in the District of Kent, yes. Yes. Yep. That I'm aware of. No, I do not.
Thank you. Further discussion on this. Counselor Jackson?
Thank you, your, your worship, um. This has been a long discussion, for my nine years, the first nine years on council, we did everything we could to try to. Buy this land, we missed the opportunity. By a few days, what I would recommend. Is it on the seventy-five acres behind Cottonwood Avenue and bordering McCombs? We state that the council will not entertain a request to have the land removed. From the agricultural land reserve. Uh, for future development. And council will make every effort to safeguard this land. As a protective, diverse, eh, ecological area of Harrison, which is really, really important. The, the other land that are, is here in the Crown Land. It's quite possible that uh. That land will be part of us to hail us or other First Nations development sometime down the road. So we can't re, it, because it's Crown Land, we have no control over that. But we do have control over the seventy-five acres and I think council has to make every effort it can. In order to secure that property. For the future. Well-being of this village, thank you.
Thank you. To our planner, did you have any comments on that one?
No, your worship, but in the fact that would be great to put into the strategic plan as well.
So let's, so the motion then? Counselor Jackson is to? Oh, go, can you repeat that again, Counselor? Yes, what's your motion on that one?
I have it written down of it, okay. On the seventy-five acres behind Cottonwood Avenue and bordering McCombs. State that the council will not entertain a request to have the land removed from the agricultural land reserve. For any type of land development. Council make every effort to safeguard the land as a protected, diverse ecological area. For all the future of Harrison, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on that, ready to call the question?
Just one comment.
Just, Counselor, Counselor, just.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt the vote. Would I be able to get a copy of that? Okay, thank you.
Counselor Fazio?
I totally agree with the Counselor. Jackson, but I'm still concerned on the overall. Question of the um. The uh. Ninety. Of the ninety-nine hectares of, of Crown Land that's there as well, that, you know, the. It's one of the last. Parks. In the Fraser Valley. And we went through um. A lot of. A lot of work with the regional district to get portion of that turned into the sector lands, which they, they maintain. So I think it's uh. I mean, I, I'm fine with what council, but I think they should have further discussion and strategic meeting. Regarding protecting that land and leaving, leaving it as it is. Uh, for the future of this community, it's very important. That that land is not developed in any way whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, Counselor Rydell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um. I'm just gonna refer to that uh, little box that is currently designated as. Crown Land, when no longer Crown Land, this area will be treated. As Village Reserve. Um, do we have a, a legal stance on that or is that? Something that is guaranteed? From the federal government or are we just making? An assumption that it will um, be treated as Village Reserve, thank you.
Go ahead. It will be treated as Village Reserve, your worship? Because it's designated or it's been zoned in your zoning by law, which is a public document and a regulatory document. That once the crown is taking it, the, the B C, in this case, the B C crown has taken it out of, out of their system. That it will be treated as Village Reserve unless council says otherwise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so we, so we have a motion on the table from Counselor Jackson. Um, so we're ready to call the question? Do I need to read the motion again? Counselor Jackson, can you read the motion, please?
I should have it memorized by now. Sorry about that. On the seventy-five acres behind Cottonwood Avenue and bordering McCombs. State that council will not entertain. A request to have the land removed from the agricultural land reserve. Or any type of land development. Council make every effort to safeguard the land as a protected, diverse ecological area.
Thank you. Finished with the discussion, ready to call the questions, so all in favor? Now passes unanimously. I think that's a great one. Um, there was another um, motion or recommendation from Counselor Fazio about the other section? That we wanted to add that to our strategic planning session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make that motion to be added to our strategic planning section that we discussed the whole. Other area of the, of the E sector lands.
Thank you.
For, for the preservation of the village.
Thank you, great one. Do we? Just to the chief administrative officer, are we good with that one? Good. Okay. Still on the same page thirteen, sorry. Did, I don't think we have to, I think it's just added, is it not? Did you need a, do we need a vote on that? Or is it just gonna add that to the strategic strata, or? Yes, thank you. We're good with that? Yeah, you're welcome. So again, still page thirteen, I think that was a. Good discussion. Um, the. Under the next section, it says manage urban land responsibility. Um, item A, manage growth within the Fraser Valley Regional District's urban growth boundary by directing it towards. Existing developed areas and by increasing the residential densities. So my concern is the words increasing residential densities and also on the next item down. Item B, it starts off with to increase the density. Um, and I just want to understand from our, if our planner can comment on what that means.
Yes, your worship. Again, what this means is just that how we're abiding by the regional context statements as outlined in the regional growth strategy. This doesn't mean. What we also have to follow is if we're gonna be looking at doing the compact communities. As opposed to sprawl, because we've only got so much land that we're gonna have to maybe look at. Uh, doing some, some higher densities and whatever that is determined by council. Uh, if you're ever gonna do an area structure plan, that's where that or a neighborhood area plan or the. An O C P. An additional O C P, all of those issues will be discussed and uh, transformed into either an area structure plan. That's what I call. When you're looking at a specific area, is an area structure plan, you can put all of that information into there. At a this particular point in time, what we're saying here is that we're not going to do sprawl, we're gonna be doing concentric growth.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I, I personally have. Um, have concerns with that in the residential zones. So when we use these words about increasing residential densities, uh, it concerns me. I think a lot of the people here moved here, we live here because we, we like our space, we like what we have. I, I know we have some dense um, community areas within the, the R one zones, um, I think we have a good mix. Um, but now, I, I know you know that this, as we're leading through this here, we're all gonna be coming to. Coach houses, garden hoses, duplexes in R one zones. So my concern again is by seeing this word here of increased density. Um, especially when it says that in the residential. Um, and again, I'm, I'm not against increasing density possibly in the downtown or the beachfront core. I think there's potential there for that, I think that's a totally different uh. Um, area, but I think again in the areas which we call R one now. And with the uh, proposed land use designation map is, is joining R one with R two. There's an awful concern out from the public and, and concerning my, and including myself to make sure that we preserve that. So I wanna make sure that, that being said, is that we don't have wording in our. In our O C P, that the developer is gonna come in and say, no, that's a good reason that we can, we can build a duplex or. Or something. Um, more density in, in the area, so that's, that's my concern. To our planner, does he have any, do you have any comment on that?
Yes, your worship, I would draw your attention to section seven, dealing with the residential development. Again, you gotta remember that this section that we're dealing with is just talking about. How we tie in with the regional growth strategy. Doesn't obligate you to do any of these activities, it just shows to the. That we've followed the legislation and we've tied in with it, the residential development policies are outlined in. On page forty of the agenda package.
I guess what, what concerns me, and I just have to look.
Because one of. Sorry, your worship.
No, sorry, go ahead.
One of the objectives is to provide, promote compatibility of new residential development with existing developments. And with the overall character of Harrison Hot Springs, so if council doesn't feel that it's comfortable. With whatever is being proposed in front of them, you can say no. That, that's because it's a, a, a change and it's also for the approving officer, when there's a subdivision coming in. They, he can say, or he or she can say. In this case, it's a he, can say that it, it's against the public interest and deny the application.
Thank you, just.
So it's, if you, if you just look at that one section and take that in isolation, then yes. I can see where the concern is, but when you look at the bigger picture, because the O C P is the overall plan. And if you tie that in with the residential development. Most easy, you'll see that it's, it's not a concern. I'm not concerned about it. Doesn't obligate us to do the concentric. That we're going to have micro lots everywhere. Doesn't give permission for that.
What's the question? Yeah, on, on the same, if we were to remove that. To say that it would definitely not be allowed in the R one areas. And I understand what you're saying with the overall development, but when I read this too, it, it kind of. I, I guess the wording is such that it could happen if the council of the day were to decide. Is that correct or am I misreading?
No, I, you, you can't base it up just upon because what you're, as I said, what, what you're, you're doing with this section. Of the O C P is just tying it in with the regional growth strategy. These are not the policies of the official community plan. Within the context of the regional growth strategy, this is how we've. Achieved what we're going to try to, or what the regional growth strategy is trying to do. We still have section seven with all of those residential policies that are required. Does that make sense? To me it does, and I understand it, that that section, it does not drive, it's got nothing to do. With the official community plan. It's just proving to the Fraser Valley Regional District. How it ties in with their regional context statement with their regional growth strat- strategy. That's all it does.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Fazio.
Yes, just want to reconfirm that, Mr. Mr. Mayor, as I. Involved with that regional growth strategy as well, as you all know, it, it is just a, it's in all the community plans. Regional growth strategies, it's just a guiding factor, really doesn't. It, it, it's, they have to include it as part of the overall vision that they have for. The, the whole of the Fraser Valley Regional District, which covers over three hundred thousand people, including us. But it's, it's in all their plans that they put it in. And it's just, but I think when we get to the section like Mr. Cossi says. On page forty, I believe, that's where the residential portion really is, is up for. For, for serious discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor Fazio. I just want to make one comment to that and, and I, I appreciate what, what, what. What you've said to our planner. But in the, under the, the local municipal. Section, section three, sections ten to twelve. And I guess what really concerns me. Is that once mentioned of it is in the official community plan. It means that, and it, and it's quote, under section two dash or ten dash two. That a local government then is no longer required to hold a public hearing on the proposed zoning bylaw. If an official community plan is in effect for that area that is subject of the zoning bylaw. And as long as the bylaw is consistent with the official community plan. So if we have it in our official community plan. Then that means that we possibly have eliminated the. Public hearing part of it. And I think the public hearing part of it is critical before there's any development like that. I realize we're going to talk about it later and as counselor Fazio alluded to, but I just want to, I think I just want to leave it at that right now. Did you have any other discussion on that? Good with that right now? Oh, sorry, counselor Bydell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just keeping in with that. Under that paragraph, under number D, avoid urban development. Into the lake and within the geotechnical hazard areas. Through you to Mr. Cossi, could you just offer some? Clarity on that sentence.
Pardon me.
In relation to urban development into the lake. It's my understanding that the village doesn't have really jurisdiction. On the bodies of water. And. I understand the geotechnical hazard area, but. I'm just wondering about development into the lake. If you could offer some insight. Thank you.
Certainly, your worship. The way it operates is the lake or in this, the water bodies is usually. Part of the crown, the, the, the bottom of the lake where the water body is usually looked after by the federal government. In certain circumstances. However, municipalities can zone the surface of water. And you, in that way, you can, you don't have houseboats popping up, float homes popping up, that sort of stuff. What, because the, the province could issue a permit that says. That can cause, you've got the water lease for this area, there are surface water lease, and I want to put in seventeen or eighteen float homes. You've got that capability to say no, because it's, we're not going to allow it to be zoned for that type of use.
Thank you, Mr. Cossi. With that also, sort of like include someone who wanted to build a multi-level. Structure, a condo building or something like that, that could potentially extend out into. Out into the lake. Thank you.
There, there's that possibility. It'd be remote, but that does exist.
All right. Thank you for that. That's helpful.
Thank you. Further discussion on that? Seeing none. Okay, on the same page, page thirteen. Under develop a network of sustainable communities. An item. It says here to, in, sorry, section A, increase the range of services and amenities available within the village. Within the village center. So my question is, 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 is what services are, are we referring to? To planner?
If somebody comes in with a, a new economic development idea or a business development idea and they want to. Run a, a, a specific type of store or retail establishment, they, they, the main focus is to put them into that area.
Thank you. Skip over to item C. Which is upgrade the wastewater treatment facilities to protect the water quality. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that one, please, to our planner? Yes, please.
Myself? Yeah, that's, that's again, just the policy, because if you leave, leave the top of it, the regional growth strategy supports. And this is how we're going to look at it, with the possibility, upgrade the water treatment facilities to protect the water quality as outlined in section nine point two. And upgrade water supply infrastructure management to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of the water system. Again, that'd be policy nine point two. We're just, again, proving to the. Fraser Valley Regional District Regional Growth folks that how this ties in with their regional growth strategy as required by legislation.
Thank you. So nine point two is further back in the.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Some notes here on the very last paragraph here. I think we've. I think we've talked about all of that. Most of that is to do with the east forest. I'll call it east forest lands. So then our next page then was fourteen. Discussion on page fourteen. We'll start with, with one of my questions here then is, it's under the achieve sustainable economic growth. And it's got item B. It says, provide for artisan workshops on large lots adjacent to Hot Springs Road. Where, or maybe the planner can explain what that is.
From a tourism perspective, if, if they want to have workshops along the way or artist galleries along the way.
So there's no specific area that you're thinking of down Hot Springs Road? Just any, anywhere from one end to the other end? Okay, thank you.
But again, it's, it's subject to what council wants to do. They may come in with what they think is a great idea, but council has the right to say no.
Thank you. Just the next item that was on here is says two point five, the public processes utilized for the development of the O C P. The community surveys, the pop-up, pop-up events, the World Cafe and the public hearing. I don't know the date that when our planner was first asked to start the update here of our official community plan. But it seems like we've really fast-tracked this whole process. And I guess I'm. I'm, I'm a strong believer in, in, in public input. I, I really want to hear what people have to say. And I mean, we've gone through COVID, we've gone through some difficult times. I understand it's been difficult. But again, this, it was, the whole process was, was pushed through so quickly and I'm, I just. Really concerned. I mean, we've only gone through, I think, the first few pages here of the O C P and we've had a number of good discussions. And I think there's a lot of good discussions still to come. And again, it, it was, it was fast-tracked and I think it would be so beneficial. For the members of the public to be able to involve in, in, in all of this stuff. So. That being said, I know we're already a couple of hours into this and. I mean, I've got, I've got pages and pages and pages of questions here. I, does council want to continue on with going through page by page or do we want to look at going back to? Rescinding the third reading, second reading and going to a public hearing. And possibly some workshops where we can engage the public and we can, we can. We can go through this in, in a, in a slower approach and talk about all the items that, that we've got here, because we. It's just four of us, five of us, sorry, that are here right now and I would love to hear. The comments from, from a lot of other people. Thoughts from council, please. Counselor Jackson?
Thank you, your worship. I think the problem is that this process we're going through is very slow.
Yes.
It's positive, but slow.
Yes.
If we continue this way, we'll be into Christmas. Really, I, I, I think the, the bottom line is that if council wishes it, probably should go back. Rescind and go back to a public hearing. Get the process. This is a very important document. Now we have to try to get it as right we can. And that's no aspersions on the past council or our planner. I think they did a great job. But it were, the goalposts are continually moving, so maybe we just have to get it right.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Fazio?
I would agree with Counsel Jackson's comments here. Maybe rescind and go. Wish I was going to go that way with the changes that we're talking about and go to a public hearing, but again, I will. Reiterate that the process was carried out very well. It was a long process. It's, I want to agree with the word fast track. There's a long process. COVID got involved through the, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor. Through that process and, and the previous council. Did make a good decision to, to not adopt it and to. Allow the new council, who we are, to further look at this. And then proceed that way. So I think it's, I think from the surveys that have been done, I mean, I just. I was just mentioning the regional district, the three hundred thousand people, and they did it the same way. With their process and they got not many more. Not much more participation than we, than we got with nineteen hundred people. So I think the process has been done. We'll have to thank Mr. Cossi and all the hard work he's put in with his staff. And our staff for getting this to where this today. But. As I would agree again with Counsel Jackson, we should rescind, go to a public hearing. See what the public had to say, the public hearing, and then move forward with council to get this plan. Finished by this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bydell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I. Will echo Counsel Fazio's. Comments and through you, the question of Mr. Cossi. Sir Cossi, can you give? Me an idea of ban the revised O C P, the whole process started? I believe it took the majority of last year. Is that correct?
Yes, your worship. It started actually in two thousand and nineteen. That's when the council gave direction for it to go and then shortly thereafter, the, the, the COVID situation hit. So everything was put in advance. Then we tried to, shortly after, I guess it was twenty twenty one. We tried to do it again, but the, the COVID situation was still too prevalent, so we, we put everything back. And then in two thousand twenty two, the, the word was go ahead. But prior to that. I did do a lot of the work on the technical background information and we kept it up on the websites.
Thank you.
Our website, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Cossi. And through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Jackson. Can you just order, offer a little bit of clarification? On what your thoughts are, or what you meant by rescinding, please?
Yes, thank you. I think what we really have to do is that each counselor and the mayor. Outline what they would like to see go in the official community plan as the way they see it. All that information circulated among the council and the mayor. And go to a strategic planning so we can deal with this matter in a concise way. Formulate all the ideas, then go to the public hearing. So now the public have their opportunity, however you want to do it in order to complete this. But this is a haddock. Thing that we're doing today. And it, it just isn't sustainable. So. I realize that it's going to take some time, but I think it's really well worth, worth it to do.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. And through you to our acting C A O and corporate officer. If we do agree to follow this route. Can you confirm that then we would be looking at going back to? A second reading? What would the process be? I'm, I'm all in favor of getting more public input through a. Through a, a, a public hearing, but. I'm just wanting some clarity on what the process would be. Thank you.
Uh, through the chair. What I see would be happening is you would rescind third reading. And then rescind, since second reading, so your bylaw still exists in its form unless council wants to. Completely. Scrap this, this bylaw. And then you would basically start the process over. And which would require the public hearings to be held as well. But if you take the bylaw, uh, rescind the whole bylaw, then you are starting at square one. The, the document would come forward to council after receiving input from council. So that council could take a look at the new bylaw, see what it thinks about it, discuss it. And you would start the whole process of first reading, second reading. And then you would have your public hearing again, your public consultation. You'll have public consultation before you actually have your hearing. Because you want to make sure that you're, the comments from the public. If valid, you would put them into the draft of the O C P.
Thank you. That, that wouldn't mean. Scrapping the whole draft bylaw and starting from scratch again with development. Of a whole new O C P. And the reason I ask that is because I do think. That it is a. Good document. I'm all for, if there needs to be some amendments, then certainly, yes, council. And have public input on that, but I, I. Don't believe that we should just. Kind of dump the whole document and, and start all over again. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Buckley?
Thank you. I, I agree with Counselor Battle. I, I do believe too that the document is a good one. There's been a lot of time and effort. Put into it and I do think there. And I do think there are enough amendments, you know, that we could change or we have some new ideas. And I'm also in favor of more public input. So by having that input, we bring everybody together in this. I don't want to be saying that we're just ramming this down somebody's throat. I really want to encourage people to participate in this, in the public hearings and we'll just get it right. And I think as Counselor Jackson had admitted too, that we're just sort of going through this piece by piece. But I think if we have some time, sit down in a proper meeting and discuss all these things, we can come back with a few things that we would feel more comfortable with, I guess, and hopefully the residents as well. So that's where I stand. So I don't want to scrap it in this entirety, but I do want to go back and do that and have a public hearing as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jackson.
Yeah, thank you, worship. So then what we would do, we send third reading. First and second would stay in place as I understand. And then we go through the process of putting on an official community plan. Is that, is that right?
Through the chair, I would suggest that you, sorry, Mr. Mayor, that I would take it back, rescind second reading. So you have the bylaw existing at first reading. Make the changes and rescind second reading, amend it, reread second meeting or second reading and then have the public hearing portion or whatever sort of consultation you'll have before that time. And then if the bylaw needs to be, sorry, I'm going ahead of myself here. You would take it back to first reading. Look at it, make the changes. You've rescinded second reading, reread it at second reading. I don't think I'm saying this right. You want to keep first reading for sure, but you can go back to second reading for, give it, reread second reading as amended. And then you'll have your public hearing and stuff like that. And then after that, you would give it third reading. And by the time you give a third reading, it should pretty much be where you want it to be. And then you could give final reading. Over and over, sorry.
I just, I just have a quick question here to our planner. Help me out on, I mean, we talked the, the last regular council meeting of the Pine Street Development there in a neighborhood task force or a plan or group that gets together to discuss options of the area with possible developers or landowners. How can that still happen if we repeal the bylaws and go back to first reading? Where does that community input come into the creation of the revised O C P? Or does it?
That's the dilemma that you have right now, your worship? Cause if you go out too often to the public, they're going to be, eh, we're not interested anymore. And then they'll come in at some time and just with the pitchforks, if you want to, lack of a better term. But I would recommend that with the, your area structure plans or your neighborhood plans, that you do them as a separate O C P issue, just for that exact reason. Because in the current official community plan, it's confusing. The developer says, well, I follow these policies. So why did they get refused? And I says, well, there's also these policies. And he said, he didn't even know about those. But I said, he did, because I told you about them. So it's, it's very unclear, your, your current official community plan. Because if you support it, you look at section A, lack of a better term. And if you don't like it, you look at section B. And that's confusing. But what you've, what I've heard here today, I've not heard anything that requires the amendment yet. Everything that's been said can be easily put in because we've not changed the intent of the bylaw. So everything that we've done so far, if I may speak freely, is if you want to go back to second reading as amended, you have to bring in something that's different that was not discussed so that changes the intent of the bylaw. So then that way it justifies you going out and talking to the public again. Right now, well, we've got, it's just minor administrative issues. Some tinkering that doesn't change that. But so what you got to look at is say, we want to add a policy X, Y, and Z. And then I'll say, well, that's good for a strategic plan or that's okay for this. Or why is the better one to put into, into an O C P? But everything I've heard right now gets pushed into either strategic plan or it's just an administrative change. So if the intent is, is you want to go back to the public, you need to take something back that has changed the intent. And that would be done through this process today.
Thank you. So just to help me then again, so you're saying that if I wanted to envision a task force again to look at the Pine Street Development, we had another task force that looked at the development at the overflow parking lands of this, of the village office. Another task force to look at what the waterfront is going to look like with the change in, of our dike now. And other, other, other various areas in the community that would be more specific. Those would be dealt with, you're saying, outside of this O C P?
Yes, your worship, that'd be the better mechanism to do it. And then you can set up, cause you've got your four years and in your strategic plan, the first year you want to have X, Y, and Z done. Year two, you want to have X, Y, and Z done. Year three, you want to have A, B, C done. And year four, you want to have whatever, whatever you've decided as, as a group.
So how is that reflected in this official, the draft official community plan?
I wouldn't put that sort of stuff into it because it's getting too specific. The, the official community plan doesn't deal with, you know, we want to have a burn six feet high or whatever, or we want to have this, that, or whatever. What it just talks about is we want to look at preserving an area or we, we've got some geo hazard areas that we need to look at it. And that's all the official community plan does. The separate standalone plans address all of those minutia issues associated with the burn, whatever it is that you got to look at, your transportation plan, your parks plan, your parking plan.
I think that's where we're, we're missing a lot is, is having that specific.
Yeah. And you're not, worship, there's a lot of other councils. Now, well, the city of Nanama, they've thrown everything into their official community plan. It's 650 pages long.
Thank you.
It doesn't mean that it's better than it, it just means there's going to be things that are forgotten. So that's, that's way too are, too large for proper implementation. Because you got to remember, the only implementation tool, while there's, there'll be more, once it's accepted, is your development approval information by law, because you've designated a D A I area in your O C P. And then your zoning by law, those are the only two tools that implement your, your, or in your development permits. But that's minor. So I would suggest that a lot of the other projects, recreation plans, cultural plans, all of those things go into a strategic planning exercise. And then you council as a whole can sit down and say, we want to do X, Y, and Z this year. And however, we want to figure it all out for the next two or three or four years.
Thank you, Counselor Fazio.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I think that's, that's the, the route to go here in regards to your, you know, the special planning groups who may want to look at a particular neighborhood or the waterfront, whatever. I mean, back when this was done, planning area one and two, it was done in, in conjunction with the Advisory Planning Commission. They were involved with the, the two special groups on Pine and on Echo Avenue. So they were involved in that process. It was a separate group of residents, but they were involved with the process with the, with the Advisory Planning Commission. Then it was reported back to the, to the planner of the day. So I think again, it's, it's a situation where we have to get the priorities right here and, and have the strategic planning. And then if you, if council plans to move ahead with a group of residents, who are going to be looking at certain areas of the village with the, whether it's with the the Advisory Planning Commission, they're under the direction, I would, I would say of our planner to, to do it there. So that before we, 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 before we really get into the, into the specifics. Cause it's, you need, you need a group of people who are going to be open minded when they discuss these areas of the village. Not because they live there, no, I don't want that. They have to be open minded about this because it has to come back to council as a report overall. So that's my suggestion is more to add to strategic plan. It looks like it's going to be definitely a two day one.
Thank you, Counselor Buckley.
Thank you. I I listened to Mr. Cossey when he was explaining this. And I think what I would like to do is forge on a little bit. Because if we do not have any substantial changes that would warrant a public hearing, going through this, if we come to it and then we say, okay, something has definitely got to change that would require that. But at this time, as he explained, and he explained it very well, thank you for that, that it makes sense to me that we don't get into every particular item, like he was explaining about the zoning and stuff, that the high density and, and our ones that it comes up later in here. So I think I would prefer just to forge on a little bit before we go back and rescind it and go back to the second reading. Just to see if there anything is critical that would warrant it, I guess, to start over basically. Thank you.
Thank you for the discussion on that. So the question is, is do we forge on or are we going to go back to, to repeal the readings and go backwards? I agree with you. Planner explained, I think that quite well, that was helpful. As far as forging on, I think that we probably here have very similar concerns. And I think a lot of it has to do with the duplex coach house thing in the R one zone. I think we've just dealt with the east sector lands. I think that was a, another big issue in the village here. So is there anything else on council's minds that, that is something that's important that we look at and continue on this afternoon and tomorrow? Or Counselor Fazio?
Could we just jump ahead to, I think it's page 40. I think that's the one that's of great importance in regards to the residential situation. But before we do that, I believe Counselor Jackson had a motion, made a motion, did he not?
Yes. I just want to find out which way we were just discussing still, if we want to continue. So Counselor Jackson, do you still want to continue with your motion?
Well, I'm not. I'm confused here.
Yeah.
We're now taking an exact opposite to what we originally talked about. So what are we, I mean, if we continue on what we're doing, are we really going to, are we really going to get to the nuts and bolts of what we want to happen? I'm not sure. But to go through this page by page, the way we're doing it, it's a long, luxurious process. I'm, so it's up to council that, you know, if you want to do that, that's fine. But I think we have to have a recess and then come back rather than sitting here all day long.
Counselor Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think Counselor Jackson, when I heard Mr. Cossey's explanation, I, and I, that's what he, you know, he's very professional in what he does. And it opened my eyes a little bit more to understand where he's coming from and preparing this document. And I think we, my personal feeling is to put in a little more time. And as I said before, without trying to repeat myself here, is that we just forge on a little bit and see if there anything is that really needs to go back because we are able to make changes to this going through by making the amendments. If there are slight changes, so that would be my preference. And yes, we will have to put in the time, but we will also have to put in the time if we go back and do it the other way as well. And I don't feel like we're rushing through anything. We're going page by page. And having read this a few times and coming back, there's definitely issues that have to be dealt with, but I think we can deal with them. So that would be my preference. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion. So did you want to rescind your motion or would you like me to? And continue on, or do you want me to call the call the question then? So when I call the question?
If I remember correctly, it was to go back to rescind two and three of the public area back to number one and then continue on through the process, through a strategic planning. All council come up with their ideas, which is circulated to each, each counselor and the mayor. And a plan developed, then go to public hearing and start over again to, to say.
Mr. Mayor, through you, I just wanted a little bit more clarification, Counselor Jackson, that you're suggesting we rescind and then have further discussions at a strategic planning session and from that then take it to public hearing? Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
So already, ready to call the question, all in favor? Motion passes with Counselor Buckley opposed.
Excuse me, your worship, just sorry to interrupt.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Now, when, what do we have to do is we have to, when we've rescind third reading and second reading, but we're not amending anything because there's been no substantially changes to this document yet. All the changes that we've talked about this morning have been just administrative. If council, as we go through this process, finds something where substantially changes the intent of the bylaw, then that merits going back to a public hearing. And then that opens up everything else. What we've got to date, unfortunately, at this point in time, is just administrative changes. And it'd be quite difficult to go back to the public and say, there's been some administrative, administrative changes, but no changes to the intent of the bylaw.
Thank you.
So we have to change, sorry, I don't, we just have to change the intent somehow. So that gives us that opening to go back.
The resolution, the resolution passed to, to repeal a second reading, which allows us councils to discuss it strategically. I think you've got three new members on council, which weren't on, on the part of the process. I think the three of us have a, a lot of questions and concerns and we would like to hear them again from the public. Under the law now, council are not permitted to speak with members of the public. We cannot have any further public comments as, as we are as the, the process of the, of the Local Government Act and the, and the charter, which is, which is unfortunate. So the only part that we can do is talk with each other and talk to staff. I would really like to get the public back involved and hear more from them. So I think that the decision that was just passed to repeal back to second reading is a good one. So that decision, decision to appeal. So I, there's no further reason to continue on here with this meeting. So I will call for adjournment. Moved by Counselor Fazio, second by Counselor Jackson, all in favor? Passes unanimously, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody for coming and there will be no meeting of council tomorrow.